Hello, it's time for a very special episode of CGPP. Our mini cast about CGP. Because next week, August 21st, 2019, Lea Bonnema is going to be doing a book club.
Yay!
Yay, reading. Yay, reading. But if you're not super into reading, we're gonna do a podcast right now.
Yeah.
Where we're gonna do a Cliff Notes of the book. The book, which is The Last Victim by Karen Robards.
It's the first book in the four book series about Dr. Charlotte Stone.
Charlie.
Charlie Stone.
And her ghost lover. Ooh. Spoilers. Ooh, ghost lover. Ooh.
You've heard of Casper the friendly ghost. Well, now meet Garland the sexy ghost. He's the sexiest ghost you know.
Okay. So yeah, we're hoping that it's, so it's a thirty-six chapter book. We're hoping that it'll even out to be about thirty-six minutes, forty minutes of podcast. Uh, and that will give you an idea of everything that happens and a bit of the flavor of what Karen does. Our buddy Karen. Um, and yeah. So yeah, Karen Robards, she's the author who has written forty books and one novella, and is a New York Times USA bestselling author and USA Today bestselling author.
Oh, whoa. I honestly didn't know USA Today did bestseller lists. Good for you, USA Today.
Yeah. Well, and she's one of them. Uh, she lives-
Also good for Karen, yeah.
Yeah, good for Karen. She lives in Louisville, Kentucky. And something very sweet in the dedication that I noticed, uh, her son Peter apparently had cancer, but his life was saved by the Anderson Cancer Center in Houston, Texas.
Oh.
Yeah, Dr. Randall S. Weber. Shout out to you for saving this kid's life.
Good on you, Dr. Weber.
Yeah, good on you. And now let's get to some ghost sex. Ooh. All right. Chapter one. Fifteen-year-old Charlotte Stone, Charlie, has just been out with one of the most popular girls in her school. Having attended seven schools over the past seven years, she's super grateful to have a friend. Quote, "Charlie knew from bitter experience that there were a lot more mean girls out there than nice ones."
And we get a description of Charlie. She is average height, maybe a little too plump. Her face, cute, round, currently rosy from her mostly futile attempts to tan. The girls have been out trying to pick up boys. And her yet to be proven theory was that unlike birds, brilliant plumage on the girls helps to attract boys.
Yes, very unlike birds. In Holly's bathroom, Charlie has been, quote, "sick as a parrot" after having a disgusting concoction of alcohol and Kool-Aid. Suddenly, Charlie hears terrifying screams. Thank you.
Hey, welcome.
She cautiously exits the bathroom, only to find her friend Holly handcuffed to a pipe with duct tape over her mouth. We then establish that Holly is cheerleader hot with blonde hair and bubblegum pink toes and nails.
After Charlie realizes that she can't free her friend, she leaves her in the basement to go find help. It's really heart wrenching because Holly is begging her to leave the entire time.
Begging her not to leave.
Sorry, begging her not to leave. She's not like, get out of here, leave me. Trapped. You're right. Uh, but like, she doesn't really have another choice. She has to leave to try to get help and alert people to what's happening.
Yeah. When she opens the door slightly to the main part of the house, she makes eye contact with Holly's mother as her ho- throat is being slashed by a serial killer.
This part was really graphic. It was, I was very, very uncomfortable reading it.
It was super intense. Uh, the serial killer has military-cut, dark brown hair and a ruddy-complexioned face, a meaty nose, full cheeks. He is over six feet tall with a thick-chested, stocky build. He wore a forced-green button-up shirt and dark jeans. Uh, Charlie runs the fuck down to the basement.
Eh, fair enough.
Yeah.
And then in chapter two, we open fifteen years later. Dr. Charlie Stone is now a doctor, a psychiatrist, and she is sitting across the table from a devilishly handsome man in a prison interrogation room. She uses devilishly because, quote, "From all accounts, this guy was as evil as he was hot, and he used his outrageous good looks as bait to lure his unsuspecting victims to him."
This person is Michael Allen Garland. And Charlie, or as I have written about her in these notes, Dr. Freud, is giving him an inkblot test.
And she laments that, you know, quote, "The best-looking guy she'd come into contact with in a long time was a convicted serial killer. With his square jaw, broad cheekbones and forehead, straight nose and well-cut mouth, the muscular, six-foot-three, thirty-six-year-old, that's old enough to be president, is in prison convicted of slashing seven women to death. And he's now been sentenced to death, ironically."
Ironic. Uh, Charlie is examining him because she's working on figuring out what makes serial killers tick.
Dr. Freud is studying typical responses to inkblot tests so that she can identify at-risk youths by their atypical responses, which is, it's a, it's a choice.
I wrote WTF.
You did write WTF, and that is appropriate. What the Fs indeed.
What the Fs indeed.
What the Fs.
Uh, she's the only women, she's basically the only woman that these men in this prison see. So she typically dresses to downplay her femininity, but even so, she's like constantly hit on because prison, am I right?
I mean, you know, considering that her average height, maybe a little bit too plump look and cute, round.
Well, not anymore. That was her when she was-
Oh, she grew out of that.
Yeah, she grew out of that.
I forgot that they changed that.
She grew into like a skeletal bird lady.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you're right. We get that a little bit more later.
Yeah.
Uh, but-
According to her-
According to her, Garland exuded a kind of masculine magnetism that if she hadn't known precisely who and what he was, she might have even succumbed to foreshadowing. Stone-cold killer was the last thing any suspected woman would think if he started coming onto her. A dream lover was more like it. Waka waka waka.
That's, I mean, that's more of the foreshadowing TBH.
Oh, shoot.
Dream lover, right?
That, that's, those are both, yeah.
Yeah.
You'll, you'll see later.
As her interview with Garland ends, she's told that two feds from the FBI are here to see her. And we also get her physical description. Five foot six, one hundred and eighteen pounds. Girl has very small, thin bones.
She's an elf.
She's an elf.
She's a high elf.
She's a high elf. She's taut and fit but lacking any intimidation factor. Yeah, cuz she's, she must have bird bones. I was a hundred and eighteen pounds once, and I am five foot six, and that was not a healthy time in my life.
Oh, yeah, no, that wasn't-
That was not fun.
No, that was bad. Um, her FBI visitors are, first, Special Agent Tony Bartoli. He is maybe six foot one, lean, but not quite as hunky as Garland, the serial killer, but he's certainly handsome enough to make her take notice. Mid to late thirties with well-groomed black hair, brown eyes and a healthy tan. He wore a red power tie with his white shirt.
Power tie.
Such an imaginative choice of clothing.
Power tie.
White shirt and red tie.
Second is Special Agent Buzz Crane. He's about five foot ten and slightly built with a thin, short-featured face set off by a pair of black-framed glasses. His hair was a brillo pad of short brown curls. His eyes were the same bright blue as his tie. And yeah, basically everyone in this story has blue eyes except for Bartoli.
That's cuz he's tall, dark and handsome, and the rest of them aren't.
Hmm.
But together, the agents made up the classic hottie-slash-geek combination, which every female who ever spent a couple hours in a bar or nightclub checking out the wares was familiar. I remember when I read that line.
Yeah.
I, I was, I immediately had to text it to you cuz I was just like, this is, like, first of all, she calls herself a female. But also, I, is, is the hottie geek, it's like the tall guy, fat guy thing in comedy duos?
No, it's definitely true. You'll see it literally everywhere.
Okay.
Where there is a hottie, there is also a geek. In fact, if you lose your geek, you will be assigned another geek.
I lost my hottie. Where is my hottie? Hottie, if you're listening to this, please let me know. We have to reunite.
They're here because they need help with a crime investigation. A seventeen-year-old girl has been kidnapped and her entire family has been murdered. Charlie is super concerned because it reminds her exactly of the serial killer murder that she witnessed as a youth.
I hope those aren't linked. In chapter three, the feds tell her that they are concerned that the Boardwalk Killer has returned.
They're, they are linked. Oh, my god.
Oh, no, they're linked. The Boardwalk Killer is the serial killer who murdered her friend Holly and Holly's mom and everyone and a bunch of other people, a bunch, a few other families in the town that they grew up in. And he's called this because the girls he, uh, he kidnapped and murdered were typically found under the boardwalk. They're not sure if something happened to this person to make the serial killer inactive for fifteen years because the serial killer stopped after that initial-
Push.
Thing. Um, or if the new one is a copycat killer. Charlie wants to refuse to help because it's super triggering to have to track down the murderer you saw murder your best friend. But they tell her, well, actually, A, you've been assigned to us, and B, you're the best hope for Bailey Evans, the kidnapped girl.
Suddenly shouts break out in the hall. Garland has been stabbed by another prisoner with a shiv.
Charlie tries to save him because she's the only doctor nearby, but unfortunately, the wound is too deep. Charlie finds herself looking into his blue eyes as he dies. Their normal sky blue had turned almost colorless. The pupils were dilated even as she met his gaze. Death, she knew from experience, was just a few heartbeats away. The baddest of the bad, black-hearted, merciless and evil. All of these descriptions of him and more were written down in his file, and she had no doubt they were true. Still, she worked feverishly to keep the life-giving blood in his veins.
As he dies, he reaches up and wraps his fingers around her wrist for a moment. Their eyes lock, and then he dies.
And then in chapter four, shit starts getting haunted.
Woo! Uh, Charlie sees Garland's soul leaving his body. Quote, "What looks like tendrils of white mist gathered above the whole length of him. The mist engulfed her wrists in a surge of electric energy. The tingle of it was tangible. She snatched her hands away out of the force field, sinking back on her heels as the shimmering miasma gathered and seemed to hang like a fog in the air just inches above Garland's body. In the next instant, she felt a cold rush of wind that went past her with a whoosh. The wind blew away, or the fog blew away swirling upward, seeming to rise and solidify until Garland himself was there, or rather, until what Garland had now become stood there."
Charlie prays for this not to be happening, but, uh, too bad, you can see ghosts.
Yeah.
Uh, the ghost immediately says, "Fuck, are you shitting me?" Classic ghost dialogue.
They're in the south.
Fuck, are you shitting me?
She watches as he looks behind him and sees something terrifying, something that to her looks like he sees something that will drag him to hell.
And she's super shaken, not only because some dude just died under her, but also because she's seeing ghosts again.
Go, 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 ghosts.
And that to her feels like a physical assault.
We learn that she's been trying to build her life in such a way that she doesn't come in the contact with the violently deceased, uh, despite profiling serial killers in a prison.
I've also been building my life that way.
She apparently has the ability to communicate with those who have recently violently died. They apparently only stick around for about a week, and she doesn't tell people about her ability because she wants to be taken seriously as a doctor. And serious doctors don't see fucking ghosts. Or fuck ghosts.
No, tho- those are both accurate statements. Um, after the Palmers died, Charlie saw Holly's mom's ghost and then Holly, and Holly was dressed in a pink prom dress. And all Hall she said was, "I wanna go home. Please let me go home." This lasted for five nights and then Holly disappeared. Charlie told her parents and doctors, but of course, they didn't believe her and thought she had PTSD. After that point, Charlie saw ghosts on a regular basis and it often made her feel physically ill. Is this where they brought up the post-traumatic murder disorder?
No, that's way later. Yeah. No, it's way later. Um, she went into psychiatry because it's a medical field where you don't come in contact with dying people very often. And she also wanted to honor Holly, to pay her back by studying the, quote, "human sharks that are serial killers."
Charlie goes to the bathroom to try to clean up and recover from Garland's death and thinks that, you know, you're a wimp, you can't faint in front of the FBI or while they're outside the bathroom. Get a grip on yourself, Charlie. Get a grip. Pull yourself together, Charlie.
And it's really sad because she's constantly shaming herself for feeling shocked and nauseous and traumatized when being put in contact with things that are shocking and traumatizing.
Yeah, I mean, she should, I think being shocked and traumatized when you are covered basically from the waist, up to your waist in blood is fair.
Yeah.
Um, and, but unfortunately, as she's cleaning off her clothes, Garland appears in the bathroom with her and asks her to save his life somehow, but she's not happy because the whole seeing dead people thing sucks. She's not a fan. That's, that's, that's basically word for word as she puts it. It sucks.
Yeah. Uh, she tells him to go towards the light, as that has previously seemed to help the ghost people she's come in contact with. He tells her there is no light, just a purple fog with things in it. Uh, and as he leaves, he quips, "Nice legs, doc. Forget the fucking light."
And then in chapter five, Charlie is brought into an RV where the FBI is conducting their investigation into Bailey Evans kidnapping. Once inside the mystery machine, Charlie meets Special Agent Lena Kaminsky, who, quote, "is in her late twenties, small and curvy, with a black chin-length bob and an olive complexion. Kaminsky was pretty in a sultry, exotic kind of way that made her snug-fitting navy-blue skirt and killer-high heels elevated to glamorous. Her super feminine looks made her aggressive personality come as something of a surprise. She'd already made her feelings about assisting Charlie. She already made clear her feelings about assisting Charlie, which were, in a nutshell, that she had better things to do."
I jumped on that sentence like multiple times, reading through this, and then realized like, no, this is just a quote from the book.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to, it's hard to read. It's hard to read.
No, that was all just the quote from the book.
It's hard to read out loud. It's, it, Karen is a pretty good writer.
Oh, yeah, no, she's, it's written well.
Yeah.
It's just, it was written to be read, not to be spoken, and so some of the word choices are a little-
Yeah. And I've, I've read some of Fifty Shades of Grey, so I, I can definitively say that she is a good writer. Like, like, go Karen. Yeah, so women just can't get along. Uh, but yeah, we learn that Bailey Evans is cheerleader cute, tanned and blonde.
And based on the pictures of the crime, Dr. Freud can ascertain that, quote, one, not quote, these aren't quotes, these are our own takes, one-
No, 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 these are her takes, but I brought them, I, I put them into a numbered list so that we could more easily and quickly digest the things that Dr. Freud is just kinda coming up with-
Okay.
-after looking at a bunch of murdered people.
So the pictures make sure she knows that, one, the killer hates his mother and was very likely raised by a single mother.
He was, two, raised in a, uh, middle-to-upper-middle-class household.
Three, his mother or mother figure was abusive to him from a young age, physically, psychologically and possibly sexually.
Four, the killer was probably an only child, or if they had siblings, they were much older and out of the house.
Apparently, she can tell all this from the autopsy pictures, which Kaminsky is very suspicious of, and Dr. Freud based her analysis on.
Uh, hating his mother, uh, was based on how intense the severity of the wounds are on the mothers.
Two, he was upper-middle-class. The people he's targeting are also upper-middle-class, which means all robberies.
Well, I guess robberies are different than serial killers.
Cuz this is like, there's always a very clear motive of like, this is the type of person I'm going after, is the id- at least in this, at least with this killer, there is.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm, I don't know that much about serial killers beyond, you know, watching the History Channel as a child.
I do wonder how this serial killer would rate on that Gethard episode where they have to pick their favorite serial killers.
Ooh, that would be interesting. Um, but yeah, no siblings, uh, is because he killed Bailey Evans's father and brother, uh, and the other siblings of the families that they had attacked, uh, very, just with one stab. They just did it like, you know, just to get them the fuck out of the way and didn't slash them up the way that they did the mother figure.
And they learn from Tony Bartoli that the serial killer-
I love how it rhymes.
It does. His name's great. He is my favorite name in the book.
It sounds like he should make raviolis.
Is that, is that, is that a little?
Am I, you mean, am I stereotyping Italians?
Yeah, a little bit. I mean, you're Italian, so I guess it's, I guess it's fine for you to say that.
Is it? Bartoli, an actual-
What? I don't know why you're doing this voice. My voice went up here.
You keep reading, keep reading. I need to Google something real quick. I'll let you know when I need to jump back in.
Brand, but they learn from Bartoli that the serial killer used a stun gun to subdue the father and the brother before killing them. Two different families have been hit in a similar way, with the abduction of a girl who they find ten days later dead. Dr. Freud also thinks that the killer is, one, a Caucasian male, two, heterosexual, probably with an addiction to pornography.
Bartoli.
That's what I was thinking of, too, yeah.
Uh, is a brand of Italian food, so.
Three, the killer wet the bed, most likely past the age of twelve and was severely punished for it. Four, he would have had trouble in school and been socially isolated. Five, he'll have a disciplinary record from school.
Six, there may be instances of fire-starting voyeurism or possible animal cruelty.
Seven, he lives or works within a few miles radius of the victims, which since they are located in three separate towns, means he moves around in some way.
Uh, eight, there was a trigger event for his killing spree, probably within a month of the first murder, and it was most likely a divorce or romantic breakup.
Nine, he's about twenty-five to thirty-five, but if he was the original Boardwalk Killer, he would have to be forty or fifty because he was around thirty when Charlie saw him fifteen years ago.
Now, that sounds like the kind of list that one can pull off of Google. That sounds like the History Channel things. Like, these are the general things about serial killers that are.
Yeah, that, but the, the pictures are what tell her this is-
I think she knew these because she studies serial killers.
So yeah, that part, that, these ones were fine. These ones made sense to me because like, as a person whose entire career is studying serial killers, she would have some diagnostics that she can presume.
Yeah.
Not diagnostics, you can presume things. She has her area of expertise.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, so Mystery Inc. heads out to the crime scene. Once there, they meet Officer Haney, the local cop in charge of the investigation. He walks with a limp from a car accident about fifteen years ago and does not seem pleased to meet Charlie. And for some reason, the TV in one of the rooms keeps turning itself on.
When Charlie looks into the room, she sees a young boy playing one of those blasted video games on the TV, Poltergeist style.
He's the serial killer.
He must be the serial killer.
It's the video games made him violent.
Yeah, Animal Farm is turning him into, not Animal Farm, fuck, that's the book. Animal Crossing is turning him into a serial killer.
Yep.
All his violent tendencies were triggered by house decorating.
Yep.
Um, he's playing a video game on a loop. He looks around, sees something that scares him, and then hides in the closet, and Charlie gets super nervous, nauseous.
Yeah, so what, what she sees is that he's stuck in this loop.
Yeah, he's in a loop of playing the game, getting scared, running into the closet, returning and then plays the game, gets scared, runs back into the closet over and over.
Yeah. Uh, chapter six, we learn that most ghosts don't see living people. Uh, the kid doesn't see Charlie or react to her, um, and Charlie tells Bartoli that the boy hid in the closet, so there might be evidence there. And everyone's like, how the fuck do you know that? This is where things start getting more like, like, these things are true. We see it as people reading the book and seeing the ghosts, but they should all be like, how the fuck do you know that?
I mean, that gets a little explained later.
Hmm.
Why they're backing her up, why Bartoli-
Bartoli backs her up, yeah. Um, so in the master bedroom, Charlie sees Bailey Evans's stepmother, Julie Mead. Unlike the younger brother, she can see Charlie and begs Charlie to help find her daughter. Uh, at this point, Charlie needs to run into the bathroom to puke, uh, and she's really mean to herself again. She's just like, grow a pair. No one else here can do what you can.
Julie Mead tells Charlie that she tore the killer's surgical glove during the attack and that there was a red heart on the back of his hand.
When Charlie leaves the bathroom, Officer Haney is hella pissed that she compromised his crime scene by puking in the bathroom. And she's just like, bitch, would you rather I puke on your floor? Uh, Bartoli and Charlie think that Haney doesn't like them because he's a local cop and they get, you know, territorial over their, their things.
And then in chapter seven-
Crimes.
Well, the, yes. Kaminsky doesn't believe Charlie when she says the killer had surgical gloves and a heart on his hand, which is super fair because she's like, how do you know that? And Charlie's like, I don't, I just know it.
I'm just, I'm a super good researcher and I know things.
My eyes work real good, so I saw things that you missed.
Uh, Charlie is exhausted. The phrase "got to lie down before I fall down" comes to her mind, which is apparently something her alcoholic mother used to say. Mystery Inc. takes Charlie to the beach house that they rented to stay in during the investigation.
Kaminsky is pissed off that she has to stay in the beach house with Charlie, and she's, because she's angry that she has to babysit this woman while the men get to do investigating. Bartoli reminds her that, actually, you're protecting a witness, and if the Boardwalk Killer is back and finds out Charlie is helping them, he'll probably come after Charlie.
Charlie takes a long shower to decompress. It feels great, but when she steps out of the shower, there's a man in the bathroom watching her.
Chapter eight begins in surprise, it's Garland. Quote, "He's in a white t-shirt, snug jeans and cowboy boots. He had a tawny mane of hair that almost brushed his shoulders, but there was still no mistaking the just-about-hottest guy she ever laid eyes on for anyone else, dead or alive," end quote.
Charlie screams and falls on her ass in the shower. Still naked, we learn that she had a good body, slim and tight and long-legged, with breasts that might have been on the small side, but were perky and well-shaped, and a well-groomed strip of pubic hair in the usual pace, place.
As opposed to soul patches, which are a strip of pubic hair in an unusual place.
Garland creepily compliments her smokin' bod.
Kaminsky hears Charlie screaming, understandably freaks out. She demands Charlie open the door immediately to check for serial killers. Charlie asks Garland to throw her a robe, which he can't because he's a ghost. Garland keeps making creepy comments, saying that Kaminsky has a hot ass and other weird shit. And Charlie is having a hard time not responding to Garland, which he can't do because Kaminsky is right there and would definitely hear her talking to someone. Garland says, "That scream was righteous."
Once Kaminsky leaves, Charlie asks Garland why he's there, but unfortunately, he has no idea either. Charlie considers what to tell Garland about the reason she's at this rental with feds, and she doesn't want to tell him that she's looking for a serial killer because he's also a serial killer. And even though he's dead, he still might be able to do something, like put off some malevolent energy, quote-unquote, or something like that. Uh, she decides to grab her Miracle-Gro kit that she always carries with her to banish bothersome spirits. However, Garland is standing directly in her way.
And then Charlie engages Garland-
Chapter nine.
Chapter nine, in chapter nine, Garland, Charlie engages Garland in some-
Reporté.
Reporté to distract him.
I know it's spelled wrong, I'm sorry.
While she gets his, her Ghost Begone kit set up. I just pictured him, piss off, ghost.
Piss off, ghost. As Charlie grabs her kit, she sees herself in the mirror. She's concerned because she's, quote, "verdict not hot," unquote. Due to her shower cap, lack of makeup and tired, pale complexion, she, quote-unquote, instinctively pulls off her shower cap to look more attractive. Quote, "It increased her sexy quotient by, she saw with relief, a considerable degree," end quote. I'm doing quotes now cuz I did quote a lot of the book in, in our breakdown, and I want people to know what's like Karen versus me.
Right, yeah, I want Robards to get credit because like, it's written, like, it's written really, a lot of it's really funny.
Shit.
Yeah, like, it's written well. So Garland's, quote, "Colonel Glint was back. His eyes were very blue now, and his mouth had taken on a sensual curve," end quote.
Well-cut mouth.
I just, I like the idea that his eyes, when he is like, super horny, go like, Fremen blue. When she realizes that she removed her cap so that she would look sexier to the dead serial killer ghost, she accurately assesses herself. Quote, "That's some serious sick-girl shit," end quote.
She doesn't say shit. That's some serious sick, girl.
Oh, that's some serious sick, girl. So this shit was my flourish.
That's okay. I, that's okay. Garland starts some heavy flirting. Quote, "Come on, doc, tell the truth. You like having a killer bod. You like me thinking you have a killer bod." With his chiseled face and sculpted body, he oozed sex appeal, and since she knew what he was, menace.
As Charlie sets up her Ghost Begone kit, she starts feeling guilty for possibly hurting Garland. She asks him to go into, quote, "the hereafter," or eternity, or afterlife, or wherever, end quote. But he counters, quote, "There is no fucking white light. It damned well isn't there, and I wouldn't trust it if it was. What there is, is mist, fog and a constant purple twilight. There's things in it, people. I can't see them, but I can hear them screaming. It's like they're being hunted down or something, whatever's hunting them. I think it's hunting me," end quote. Charlie internally girds her loins, quote, "Get thee behind me, guilt," end quote.
As her Ghost Hunter kit begins to work, she tries not to feel guilty, hopes that it works, and prays that he doesn't take vengeance upon her. Uh, he starts being sucked into something. She feels bad, but upon seeing- Uh, he starts being sucked into something. She feels bad, but upon seeing him, she thinks, forget Bambi, think Voldemort on steroids. That's, that's, that's Robards.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was solid.
Way to bring me in by mentioning Voldemort. I'm like, you get us nerd girls. Also, Harry Potter came out so long ago.
Yeah.
I've never felt old before by people mentioning a pop culture thing, until just now, thinking about how long ago Harry Potter came out. Like, just gonna be real.
I mean, I mean, I mean, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
That's, that's fair.
Garland attacks. He slammed into her, grabbing her, smashing her against him, which, given his degree of muscularity, should have felt something like being smacked hard into a stone wall. But besides a single microsecond in which she seemed to experience an uncannily real sensation of physical contact and an accompanying quick instinctive burst of terror, all she actually for sure felt was a kind of electric tingle, a surge of electricity, a blast of air, and Garland was gone.
Chapter ten now. Doctor Freud is back in the mystery machine, looking at the photos of crowds from the scene of the crime, ostensibly to see if she recognizes the Boardwalk killer. She fears that his face could have changed, especially since he's a lot older now.
Yeah. Uh, Bartoli finds a lead based on the heart that ghost Julia Mead told Charlie about. There's a place called The Sanderling, a fancy restaurant and dance hall that stamps hearts on the back of patrons' hands when they pay admission. Kaminsky continues to wonder why they're just believing this bitch about the red heart thing, which is a super fair concern.
So the team goes on a field trip to The Sanderling, the fancy-ass dance hall. Charlie notices that Crane seems to be super into Kaminsky based on how they pick on each other, because that's a super healthy trope. Bartoli tells Kaminsky, you don't get to carry your gun here. Kaminsky is concerned, which, fair, they're going after a serial killer. But Bartoli tells her, hey, Crane and I will have guns, so you don't have to be worried. Because no women needs to, well, no woman needs to ever be worried when men specifically take away their ability to protect themselves. We only mean the best at all times, ever.
Not all men.
We have ne- we are not responsible for most of history's atrocities.
Yeah, no, he specifically tells her, like, it's an undercover mission. Don't worry, we'll be carrying guns.
Yeah, I love that, I love that it's not like, well, I'm not carrying my gun, so you're, you're also good. It's like, no, I'll have a gun, so you're good. Only a good guy with a gun can protect a good woman without a gun. As they walk out of the mystery machine to head to The Sanderling, a bunch of F, of reporters appear out of nowhere. They're all, do you know what's happening? Oh my god, is there a serial killer? Oh my god, we are the press and we think that this is an effective way to communicate with law enforcement.
Yep. Chapter eleven, Mystery Inc. makes, makes their way through the crowd of press and get into their van. Everyone, including Charlie, is concerned that her picture is going to end up on the news and that the Boardwalk killer will recognize her.
Crane apparently already eliminated a suspect based on the fact that he's black, because somehow Doctor Freud knows that the killer is white.
Yep. In the van, we learn that Kaminsky was, this is the weirdest thing.
Oh, this is the weirdest thing in the book. Yeah, a hundred percent.
This is a book about serial killers and ghost fucking and dreams, but this is the weirdest part of this fucking book. We learn that Kaminsky was raised a Scientologist.
And is still one, but a not practicing one?
Okay, quote, Charlie was kind of fuzzy on the details, but was pretty sure that Scientologists don't believe in psychiatry, which explained a fair amount of, uh, Kaminsky's attitude towards her. Kaminsky elaborates. Anyway, just because I was raised a Scientologist doesn't make me a Scientologist now. I am non-practicing. And I have so many questions, I don't know where to begin.
Yeah, that was a weird.
I have so many questions, I think I want to do a follow-up podcast only about my questions about this specific quote.
Well, if we're leaving that for a follow-up pod, let's go to the dance hall. Charlie sees an old couple walking up the steps to the plantation house. Yeah.
It's in a plantation house.
I know.
Everything fancy in the south is in a plantation house.
I know, it's just weird. But with a ghostly figure following them. She feels nauseous, but isn't too bothered because the ghost isn't paying attention to her. She figures that he is either attached to the building itself or the old couple that are walking in front of him. Apparently, ghosts can become attached to a location, or a person, or object, or animals that are around when they die. So a noun, they can become attached to nouns.
Yes. No verbs, only nouns. They're like attached to running. Whenever you're running, this dude just fucking appears.
Maybe that's what the muses are.
Ooh.
I would love that. I, I want to do the, I want to expand on the mythology of this book.
Ooh. Uh, they enter a beautiful restaurant. As they are seated at their table, Charlie looks at a pretty fountain. And what does she see on the other side? Garland!
And as chapter twelve opens, Garland is, quote, exactly as she had last seen him. Still gorgeous enough that in under any other circumstances, just setting eyes on someone who looks like him would have made her heart go, pity pat.
Pity pat.
End quote.
He looked at her, then vanished, poof, like he'd never been there.
She freaked out and recites a very common prayer, spirit, spirit, go away, don't come again another day. End quote. She's obviously freaking out and trying not to alert the FBI agents. Uh, Charlie informs the team that the serial killer is an ephibophile, and Kaminsky lets them know that that means he's into post-pubescent kids, teens.
Everyone is super obsessed with what Charlie is eating. Uh, she doesn't get much food because she's afraid she's going to puke due to all of the ghost activity. Um, and again, every, I don't, everyone is super obsessed with what she's eating.
I mean, if she, from, from, from what, so remembering that she's what, a hundred and sixteen pounds?
Hundred and eighteen.
Hundred and eighteen?
Yeah.
They may just legitimately be concerned for her health.
No, she might have really small bones and therefore be like, you know, look, look, be a healthy weight for herself.
That's true.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna wait, shame, but they fucking are.
Yeah, I take back what I, let me, let me, let me take back, like, reel in what I said, because you're right, I didn't think of that.
But let me, let me reel out what happens next. Um, they're like, why aren't you eating? And she's like, I'm dieting. And they're like, but you had a big lunch. And she's like, I'm dieting now. Kaminsky's all, better you than me, and turned back to the buffet with a shrug. Quote, you're pretty slim. You should be able to handle a Big Mac and a decent supper, Crane told Charlie cheerfully. Especially considering your height. Now, if you were short, you might have something to worry about.
I take it back when I said they might just be concerned for her health. They're very clearly not.
Kaminsky's head snapped around. Is that some kind of dig at me, Crane? Crane looked as taken aback as if one of the shrimp on his plate had suddenly snapped at him. No. Because if it is, you know what you can do with yourself. Well-filled plate in hand, Kaminsky turned and marched back towards their table. Crane looked at Charlie and Bartoli, who were behind him, with an expression of bewildered appeal. Its silent message was, what did I do? You dug your own grave, Bartoli told him. Women and weight don't belong in the same conversation. Thanks.
Yeah. Um, we also then learn, in addition to learning that lesson, that Crane had been engaged to Kaminsky's sister for a while in the spring, but then broke it off two weeks before the wedding, and Kaminsky is super pissed about it. Thirsty Crane realizes that.
Thirsty Charlie.
Thirsty Charlie, sorry, thank you. Thirsty Charlie realizes that, quote, the top of her head just reaches the base of Bartoli's nose, of her own head.
Yeah.
And his shoulders are broad, and his body is lean and fit, and she felt a pleasant tingle of attraction. Bartoli was a good-looking man who was gainfully employed, and she liked him. She'd had more than one relationship that had started off with a lot less going for it than that, end quote. And then suddenly in her ear, a voice growls, miss me, doc? It's unmistakably Garland.
Charlie flips her plate and food flies everywhere. She's sure that Garland is there, quote, toying with her like a cat with a mouse.
In chapter thirteen, Charlie is very embarrassed about being so klutzy. The place looks pretty fancy and it's full of old people, so Mystery Inc. is curious why Bailey Evans and a bunch of teenage youths, teenage girls, would be there. When their waiter comes, Kaminsky puts on the undercover charm, pretending her teenage niece came here last week and asking what might have been happening.
The waiter smiled. He had introduced himself as Keith, Charlie remembered, as in, hi, I'm Keith and I'll be your waiter tonight. Keith was a cute blonde guy in his early twenties, maybe a college student, young enough to have plenty in common with a pack of teenage girls, Charlie thought. Old enough that they probably thought he was cool, or hot, or whatever teenage girls thought about cute guys these days.
Apparently, a band called Cornucopia played last Friday night. The waiter knows a bunch, a bunch about the band, and when they ask him why, he says, quote, when the girls, when they play, the girls show up. What's not to like?
Yep. The killer might be in the band, might be someone who works with the band, part of the waitstaff, or someone who works at the restaurant. And Doctor Freud says that what they should look for, uh, is a poor relationship with his parents, hypochondria or other attention-seeking maladies, and probably someone working with him will have noticed that he can't take criticism.
Kaminsky and Charlie butt heads, and Kaminsky said sarcastically, quote, let's see, I can start with, how much do you hate your mommy and daddy? And then, how about, do you get sick a lot? Because she has to try to find this, those are questions that she was supposed to ask about the serial killer, like.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because about the hypochondria or the parents.
Yeah. Bartoli asks, uh, Charlie to dance. Charlie is shocked, but Bartoli explains that they want to get the crowd on camera, so if they're dancing, it would make sense for their friends to be filming them and then get the whole crowd. Uh, then Bartoli was on his feet, pulling back Charlie's chair for her. See, he's a gentleman too. Relationship material, if I ever saw it.
Charlie discovered that she kind of liked holding his hand and thought she should definitely pursue this. She found herself appreciating with the kind of half-amused irony in the fact that, what her, wait. She just liked that her hand was resting on a suit jacket. What you want is a man who goes to work every day wearing a suit. She could almost hear her mother, who had never taken her own advice, saying.
Bartoli mentions that he had been married but is now divorced. Charlie tries to pay attention to dancing because otherwise Mrs. Klutz will come back. Quote, she's been doing her best not to reinforce the too clumsy-to-live image that the incident with the banana pudding had probably permanently solidified in his mind. Because yes, women are klutzy. That's, that's the flaw.
I mean, if rom-coms have taught me anything, it's that's the flaw.
That's the flaw.
All meet-cutes come from that.
That's the flaw.
And then Charlie's talking to Bartoli when suddenly, quote, instead of Bartoli's lean, dark features, the face she had found herself staring up to as she spoke was the sex-on-the-hoof gorgeousness that was Garland's. The smile he gave her as their eyes connected chilled her blood, and he said, new boyfriend, doc?
So you looked up what sex on the hoof was?
I did, but, but.
But you forgot, because it was super random?
No, it was like, yeah.
It's a reference to another romance novel.
There is a, so it's, there is a novel called that. I don't know for sure if they're both referencing the same.
Saying idiot.
Just don't know.
If you know what this means, tell us, please.
I've, I had never encountered it before.
I'm so curious, I need to know. But I need to know more, what?
So Urban Dictionary says that on the hoof, it means an exceptionally masculine or muscular man.
Oh, okay.
So I think it's like.
He's so masculine.
Sex man. Is what it means.
Sex man.
Yeah. And it's a, it's apparently.
It was the sex man gorgeousness that was Garland's.
And it was added to Urban Dictionary back in two thousand and eight.
Okay.
So it seems like that could easily have been the thing that.
Okay.
Influenced this.
Okay.
I, I.
Okay.
I don't know.
Chapter fourteen, thirsty Charlie is in a pickle. She can't acknowledge Garland because she's the only one who can see him. However, her face and body language are for sure giving her away. Quote, Garland had insinuated himself between her and Bartoli, so that it was Garland she was dancing with, Garland who was holding her hand, Garland who was looking down into her face.
Garland informs her that that, quote, juju, unquote, stuff didn't work, and he had fought his way back to the mortal realm. Charlie can see Bartoli, but can't hear him. Garland translates, quote, lover boy wants to know if there's anyone special in your life. No, Charlie replied out loud, concentrating on the reassuringly solid features of the real, live man behind the phantom. What, you're not gonna tell him about me? Garland's eyes swept her face. She wanted to say, go fuck yourself, but managed not to say that out loud. I'd rather fuck you, Garland said. She must have looked shocked or horrified, or something pretty transparently wigged out, because Garland laughed. I'll be around. And then she, he shimmered and was gone. I'm gonna try to do all of his lines going forward as, ooh.
I'm, I'm here for it. I'm here for it. Oh, no! It turns out she said, go fuck yourself out loud.
Oh, no.
She covers it by saying, quote, uh, I said I'm just like yourself, just like yourself, currently uninvolved. This guy was handsome and smart and decent, and if he didn't think that she was at least two parts clumsy fruitcake, it wasn't for lack of evidence.
Garland trolls her. He's hitting on her, asking if she's fucking the FBI agent, saying he fantasized about fucking her. Bartoli's trying to chat with her, and he mentions basically her whole history, because he definitely did a background check on her.
Bartoli compliments her, quote, in this business, we get good at reading faces, and what yours says about you is that you have character and intelligence and honesty. I saw that as soon as I met you. This guy sucks, Garland said. He should be telling you what a hot little body you have.
Bartoli is actually saying, quote, I have to admit, you were a surprise after going over your credentials. I was expecting someone more imposing. What he means is he thought you were going to be but ugly, Garland said. That's what I thought when I found out the psychiatrist they were taking me to see was a woman. I mean, who sticks a babe in a men's prison? Ooh.
When they finish dancing, Bartoli smoothly says that they should do that another time, like when they're not on an investigation. Garland responds, quote, just to give you a heads up, doc, he's the type that asks permission. Is that what you want? May I put your, my hand on your titty, Dr. Stone? Garland's, mm, uh, mocking falsetto made Charlie clench her teeth. Is it okay if I put my dick in your, uh, yeah, because getting clear consent is the least sexy thing possible. Thanks, sex on the hoof, Garland.
Oh, that was, that was, that was bad, yeah. Charlie orders Garland to follow her to the bathroom and says, I'm pissed at you. And Garland says, now that's what you call a real coinkydink. I'm pissed at you too.
I'd also like to apologize to everyone listening to this podcast. We had hoped that, so it was a thirty-six chapter book, and we're like, oh, that evens out to about a minute a chapter. And we are now like forty-five minutes in, and we are on chapter fifteen. So buckle up, motherfuckers. Ghost sex, ghost sex, ghost sex, go sex. Garland is angry about how last night Doctor Freud tried to send him to hell. Charlie is pissed. If Garland is meant to go to hell, then that's his business and not her fault. Uh, they fight and he keeps trying to threaten her, but fool can't do that anymore, because he's fucking dead.
However, he says if she tries to send him to Spookville again, which I guess is what they're calling the Purple Twilight Place now, he'll come right back and he'll bring one of the monsters that prowls around in there with him.
A little old lady enters the bathroom, followed by another goddamn ghost, a dreadlocked man wielding a knife. He demands to know where the money is, and once he realizes that Charlie can see him, he runs to her. Garland, the serial killer ghost, jumps into hero mode. His shoulders suddenly looked as wide and formidable as an NFL linebackers in full gear. He charges at the knife ghost and they both disappear.
Charlie asks the old woman if she'd been involved in any kind of violent incident in the last few weeks. The woman freaks out, admitting that her husband shot a man who was trying to rob their store. She wants to know how Charlie knows about that, because it wasn't on the news and there also wasn't a police report. She freaks out and leaves the bathroom.
Garland reappears and wants Charlie to admit that he was being a hero. L O L, no. Quote, that guy couldn't have even hurt me. Quote, apparently, they, quote, crashed through into Spookville right in front of a hunter, and he was nabbed. Lucky for Garland, he's pretty good at slipping out of there, just dove right back through the same hole he came in through.
Garland reveals he's not choosing to stalk Charlie, he just seems to be reappearing wherever she is. Charlie freaks out because she realizes that Garland is attached to her, and she now has a pet serial killer ghost.
Chapter sixteen, Garland isn't too hot on the attached thing either. Quote, you're cute, doc, but you're not exactly my idea of an arousing good time. Now, if you were a stripper or a whore, you're disgusting and crude and a psychopath. Don't think I've forgotten what you are. And what's that? You brutally murdered seven women. Did I? The Commonwealth of Virginia says you did. They sentenced you to death for it, if you recall. What, are you gonna try and tell me you're innocent? Would you believe me if I did? No. Do you like my voices?
Yeah, those are good voices. And that's like the exact amount of ambiguity that I think was needed for the raucous ghost sex later.
Oh, yeah, now I can feel totally fine about their strange relationship.
But Charlie is still convinced that he is guilty because the afterlife he sees isn't what others have seen. He didn't see a white light. He sees Spookville because he's on his way to H E double hockey sticks.
Garland tells Charlie that she doesn't need to be afraid of him. He wouldn't hurt her even if he could. Quote, that's actually kind of rich, considering you've been threatening me practically since you died. If I've been threatening you, it's only been because you tried to voodoo me out of. If I've been threatening you, it's only been because you tried to voodoo me out of here. Don't do it again and you and I should get along just fine. Because constant sexual comments are totally fine and acceptable. That's not threatening at all.
Dr. Freud leaves the bathroom and mystery inks get, and Mr. Ink get back in the SUV to continue working on this case. She suggests they look for a history of mental illness in the suspect's family. Quote bipolar schizophrenia, maybe ECT treatments. Probably the family member will have a record of psychiatric episodes. If not, alcoholism or drug abuse might serve as markers, end quote.
Garland appears in the backseat. Quote, so you've got a murder spree and a missing girl. I'd ask you to fill me in on the details, but I'm just not that interested. Charlie is pissed, but as a sudden realization, maybe Garland can help her with the case. She asks mystery ink to stop by the crime scene. There's something she wants to see in the boys room, AKA ghost kid central.
And that's why in chapter twenty-seven, chapter, chapter seventeen, I got optimistic for a second there. In chapter seventeen, Garland says, that's a fucking kid. He fixed Charlie with a flinty gaze that once upon a time, like when he was alive, would have been intimidating. I don't mess with kids. I don't get my kicks upsetting kids. What happens if he freaks out? End quote. Because, you know.
Yeah, yes. This is where she convinced me that, well, she had already convinced me it was okay for them to fuck earlier. When doubt was entered about whether he's a serial killer. But now that clinches it, he's nice to kids. Fuck that ghost hun. Uh, Charlie asks Garland to ask the kid if he noticed anything about his murderer. However, Garland isn't just gonna do a favor for her. He makes her give her word that she'll try and keep him on the mortal plane. Uh, she'll try, she thinks to herself, quote, on a cold day in your final destination.
Officer Haney had to let them in the house and he's pretty pissed off about Charlie being in the boys room again. Haney shows up along with another detective, two more beat cops and two more beat cops in his patrol car.
Garland is pretty nice to the kid. Uh, the kid describes the murderer as having a long, thin face, a black beanie with an eagle on it. And the killer had said, peekaboo, I see you when he found Trevor. Uh, which is fucking psycho. Trevor looks off into the distance. Dad, is that you? Dad! Beaming with light, Trevor took off running with his arms outstretched. After two pounding strides, he vanished into thin air. Uh, Garland said that he saw a man appear, say, come on Trev, and then disappear with the boy.
Garland seemed really upset and so Charlie, and so quote, and Charlie instinctively went into professional mode. Projecting empathy and understanding to the best of her ability. Something obviously touched a chord. Did what you just see remind you of anything you experienced around eleven years old? Some kind of interaction with your father or father figure, maybe, end quote. I feel very comforted whenever anyone uses the phrase parent or parental figure.
Yep, super comforted. Garland reveals dramatically, you wanna know what chord got touched? Do you wanna know what kind of interaction with my father figure I had when I was eleven years old? I'll tell you, I shot the bastard dead. Charlie's kind of freaked out and doesn't know if she should believe him.
Charlie tells Officer Haney that she's almost sure this killer is a copycat, but can't say why, of course. The reason she gives is that the perpetrator didn't use duct tape, which was something the boardwalk killer had done. Haney does, Haney wants to know. Why do you know this?
Suddenly they see on TV, there's an expose about Charlie. How she's the only survivor of the boardwalk killer murderers and is now investigating the new spree. Wow.
Quote, Charlie forced herself to breathe, then seeing how Haney was looking at her, seeing the surprise on his face. She put up her chin and met his gaze. This is how I know, she said coolly.
Stone cold. Chapter eighteen. Bartoli is super nice to Charlie after she leaves the crime scene. She's thinking that he's just the kind of guy she would have wished for before this all happened. And he's even wearing a suit. Suits are like Viagra for women. These are true things.
Another true thing is that Charlie hopes the killer is a definitely a copycat because if that case, he won't come after her. Bartoli tells her that she shouldn't go out by herself and Charlie feels like she's going crazy because she's a runner and she can't run her stress away. So Bartoli offers to go running with her and tells her to set a time. And she's all challenge accepted, six thirty AM tomorrow, meet me here.
Suddenly some dude runs towards them. She falls over and Bartoli catches her. They're both freaked out, but realize it's just another police officer. Haney had seen them walking from the car and sent this officer to give Bartoli a surveillance video of a car that. They had seen that he wants the feds to look at.
Charlie notices how good Bartelli, Bartoli smells. She looks at it, look that blah, blah, blah. She looks up at him, quote, he wasn't quite as tall as Garland. Not that I'm thinking about Garland or quite as muscular or quite as handsome or comparing him to Garland in any way. It's just that Garland was the last man she had stood this close to. But Bartoli totally was plenty tall and muscular and handsome in his own right. And a dependable, steady man of good character besides, end quote.
They decide to start calling each other Charlie and Tony. How cute. She muses, quote, I wouldn't have picked it. Uh, she muses, I wouldn't have picked a detective like Haney as the type to hand over potential evidence. His department found to the FBI. He strikes me as being more territorial than that. Uh, Bartoli thinks that it's because now that the media is all over the case, Haney will be the one under a microscope as the local case lead. Bartoli again forces Kaminsky to watch Charlie while the men do more detective work.
And while they're hanging out, Charlie and Kaminsky have a fight. Charlie says, is it me you have a problem with or just psychiatry in general? And then Kaminsky says, the day you explained to me how you, through some kind of psychiatric mumbo jumbo. Can tell me that the unsub has a red heart stamped on his hand is the day I believe that psychiatry has a role to play in solving a case like this. End quote. I mean, like, she's kind of right.
Yeah.
Cause psychiatry is not doing this.
Yeah, no, it's, it's ghost talking.
It really reminds me of Psych. Where it's like, I have powers, but I have to come up with very flimsy lies to cover for them.
Charlie goes back into her apartment and there's no Garland in sight. However, she can't help but be curious about this whole shooting his father thing. She goes through his file on her computer and discovers that his mother was a crazy drunk who had married some dude who was super physically abusive. On the night of the offense, quote, the victim had beaten her and Garland and subsequently left the house. When he returned, Garland shot him with a twelve gauge shotgun. His mother expressed anger at him for killing her husband and was in the process of giving up her parental rights. She had stated that the subject is a mean little shit. And she wanted nothing to further to do with him now that he had killed her husband.
Well, now there's one doubt about Garland murdering seven women. Two, evidence that he's nice to kids. Three, a moment where he quote saved Charlie from a ghost. And four, a sad backstory. He's basically marriage material.
Get it, girl.
It is pretty sad though.
Yeah, it is pretty sad.
Kaminsky bangs on the door and jumps into Charlie's room with her gun. She saw a naked man outside of Charlie's bedroom. Charlie is doubtful. Kaminsky is certain. He was quote tall, blonde, built and way hot. Great descriptive stills, skills detective. Just as Charlie was like, dude, there's no naked man here. She sees a naked man. It's Garland, naked.
Chapter nineteen. Charlie convinces Kaminsky that there is no naked, naked man, so she leaves. Thirsty Charlie will forever remember, quote, the absolute eye candy of his broad shoulders, corded arms. Powerful back, narrow hips, tight ass and long, strong looking legs. Muscles upon muscles rippled as he moved. His hair was wet, slicked back from his face, curling just a little on the ends. His tan looked golden in the bathroom's bright light. Gorgeous wasn't right, quite the right word. It was too feminine to do him justice. But it was the first one that sprung to Charlie's mind. Dangerous was the second. He's also apparently, quote, totally hung.
What's wrong with you? It's not like he's the first naked man you've ever seen, she scolded herself. Then in an annoying involuntary corollary, her internal dialogue concluded with, he's just the best looking.
Quote, you wanna fuck? Garland growled. The question as he stepped in front of her and snapped his eyes into collision with hers. What? No, then quit looking at me like that.
Charlie said, quote, just to set the record straight, I don't think you can fuck anymore, Casper. End quote. The look he gave her cackled, oh, this is actually still a quote, I was sending her saying that. The look he gave her cackled with ill temper. Oh yeah, let's find out. Garland reached out to yank her into his arms, but of course it just passed right through her. Cause that was so not threatening. It was a very non-threatening motion.
No, that's not the creepiest thing that has happened so far in this book besides serial killer.
Yeah, no, that's, it's not, that's not, that's not creepy and weird at all.
Yeah, no, yeah. Bartoli and Crane are back to check out the naked man situation. Crane makes fun of Kaminsky calling her lean cuisine and she calls him buzz cut. Cause they're totally hot for each other. Charlie is self-conscious that Bartoli sees her without her makeup. And once they all leave, Garland tells Charlie that he's naked because he tried to go swimming and took off his ghost clothes. And then he was hanging out in the ocean when all of a sudden he was back in Charlie's room, totally naked. And he doesn't know how to manifest ghost clothes.
And Garland asks why the feds are so concerned about Charlie's safety. And she tells him about the investigations, but doesn't tell him that he's, she's the only survivor of a serial killer attack. Quote, you don't want to tell me, that's fine by me, but I'm here with you and your boyfriend is in his room or out there. If I were you and I was in some kind of trouble, I'd be thinking of me as your last line of defense. End quote. That's all Garland, by the way. And now Garland is all protective over her seconds after being pretty rapey.
Yeah.
Pretty, 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 pretty bad.
Pretty rapey.
Pretty bad. And he, he claims, you know, you can trust me. I'm the only, you're the only one who can see me. So why would I lie? And then he looks at her computer and realizes she was looking at his file.
Chapter twenty. Dr. Freud and Garland chat about how, how he killed his violently abusive stepfather. Her heart aches for the little kid to whom this happened. She wants to know what happened that night, but he counters like, why the fuck are you here bitch? And she's all, well, I can ID the killer, cause I'm such an accomplished doctor. Uh, she doesn't tell him about the boardwalk killings. He again proves his fuckableness by becoming protective of her again.
And then all of a sudden his hand disappears and he freaks out and asks Charlie to help him. She's hesitant to do so, but then he says, please, and apparently that's all it takes to get her to help you out.
She puts salt all around the living room, thinking, cause you know, salt's a barrier.
Yeah.
For spiritual things. So she's like, well, if he can't get out. Then nothing else can get in to take him out.
Yeah.
Right? So, uh, she turns on the TV for him, ESPN, so he doesn't get bored. And he's a man, he likes sports, so it has to be ESPN.
And he says again that he's scared the killer will come after her. And then Charlie says, oh, you're so sure of that because, quote, oh, that's right. You know all about serial killers, wouldn't you? And then Garland looks at her without speaking for the space of maybe a couple of heartbeats, which he doesn't have anymore. And then says, quote, I'm gonna say this one more time, doc. And you can believe me or not. I've done a lot of bad things, but I didn't do that.
But I won't do that.
The stupid thing was that like, she was on the brink of maybe believing him. But he's a charismatic psychopath, so quote, she was on guard now. Armored against any type of persuasion he might try to use. Hopelessly naive are not us.
I like, I like the little quips.
I like the quips a lot. I think they're very fun, like.
Hopelessly naive are not us, spirit, spirit, go away. Don't come again another day.
No, they're really funny. Like they keep the book being super readable, but just sprinkling in all these little like witticisms throughout it.
Voldemort on steroids.
Yeah, no, it's a really good idea. Like I think that's a big part of why the book is so fun to go through.
It is really fun. Um. Chapter twenty-one. Charlie tries to get some sleep and infuriates her to realize that having Garland nearby makes her feel comforted. Quote, you know, your life has serious problems when having a serial killer ghost nearby makes you feel safe. Now begins the longest dream about dream fucking.
Yeah, yep.
She's dreaming.
This is, the rest is a dream. Charlie sees Holly super happy. They're at a dance together. She realizes that Holly is wearing the poofy pink prom dress that her body was found in. Charlie thinks about how Bailey Evans was at a dance before she was kidnapped and wondered. Maybe Holly's also gone to a dance in the days before she was kidnapped. Then she looks back at Holly and realizes Holly's being whisked off the floor. Charlie tries to chase her, tries to see who she had been dancing with, but it's a dream, so it's just darkness.
Then suddenly she's whirled around by her dance partner. She could feel the unyielding strength of his body, the steely muscularity of the arm around her waist. The warmth and size of his hands gripping hers with a vividness that had been missing before. Quote, you're okay. I've got you now. It was only a bad dream.
And of course, the firm corded arm that grabbed her was Garland's. Quote, his beautifully cut mouth was hard with concern. She was dancing with Garland, but she was also undeniably glad to see him. Now this is a kick in the head, he drawled and gave her what she could only describe as a wolfish smile, unquote.
Thirsty Charlie gets hella turned on dancing with Garland. Uh, quote. With every movement of his powerful thighs. She could feel the unmistakable maleness of him pressing hard against her abdomen. Feel him just as surely and as acutely as if he were a living, breathing man. With a dick pressing against her abdomen through his snug jeans. He tells her that this part is real and she's like, nah, nah, I'm totally dreaming. This is totally a dream.
And they're dancing and dry humping and she thinks she should be dreaming about Bartoli. You know, the actual romantic possibility for her. And Garland is all fuck Tony, much like Robin in the Titans trailer. Without warning, his thigh moved between hers, rough and solid, pressing against her, sliding hard against her silky panties. The effect was electrifying. Her body instantly tightened. It instantly burned.
He's trying to make her come with his thighs.
No, I get what he's.
Do you like how much of the quotes I leave in for this part?
I feel very uncomfortable reading these. Oh boy.
They end up in a biker bar and Adele's Rolling in the Deep is playing.
I do like how that specifically dates it, that that's her dream.
Yep. Chapter twenty-two, we're still in the fucking dream. The pleasurable throb inside her intensified until it was something way hotter and more liquid. The baddest of bad guys was heating her up, turning her on. He was doing it deliberately too, she was sure. And she faced the facts, was reveling in it.
Turns out that Charlie's never really slept around or partied much because of all the PTSD from the. Serial killer murder that she witnessed and made eye contact with the victim while it happened. Quote, she was plastered so close against him that she was able to feel every bulge and sinew and belt buckle and zipper moving with him. That big girthy sinew, like he was her lover, like he was her man.
Dick.
Yeah, oh yeah, your CGP prediction has come true very much in this book.
Quote, come on doc, admit it, you totally like me. At a certain point, quote, her breasts swelled against his chest and her nipples tightened. His mouth found the tender curve between her neck and shoulder and she could feel his tongue caressing her there. She sucked in air. Her body suddenly felt boneless. He was doing this on purpose. She knew that now. Cause she didn't know it before.
Oh wow, I thought this was all an accident. This was all.
I didn't realize that when he was like dry humping my clit with his thigh that he meant to.
This was all a crazy misunderstanding.
But the friction of it moving against that most sensitive part of her body made her quake. And it's called a clitoris. I just wanted, I just, I was wondering if Karen knew what it was called. It's called a clitoris.
Do you always make out with your partners on the dance floor? No, only with the real babes. If this is a dream, then they can totally like fuck without consequences, right? She takes off her nightgown and is ready to get down on the beach because they're on a beach now and her body pulses with sexual need.
Twenty-three, we're still dream fucking. Chapter twenty-three. Three chapters of dream fucking. I just wanted to call everyone's attention that there have been three chapters of dream fucking.
Twelfth of the book.
Yep.
Well, yeah, for now.
Yeah. They kiss and it's really intense. Quote, not one of the previous kisses she'd experienced had made her feel as hungry for sex as an animal in heat. Those experts in sexual attraction, the French have an expression. And I didn't write down the expression, cause it's in French, but it's thunderbolt. That's what she felt.
It's super effective. He's about to put his mouth on her nipple when she wakes up. She's tangled in sheets and hella hot and bothered. Quote, her problem was that she was consumed with lust. Is suffering from a bad case of near coitus interruptus, the worst spell in Hogwarts. She's super tired and only awake because she promised Bartoli they would go for a run. She doesn't want to avoid the run, but she does want to avoid Garland who's in the other room. She decides to be brave and goes into the next room.
Coitus interruptus.
Excuse me, it's coitus interrupta. Excuse me, it's coitus interruptus, not quiteus interruptus. In chapter twenty-four, she sees Garland laying on the couch and turns to leave and he's all, where are you going? And she's like, I'm going for a run. See ya. Out of here. Charlie out.
Charlie out. Uh, Bartoli is waiting for her. Um, she's excited because she likes Bartoli. Um, but she would much rather be alone to process her fuck dream about the serial killer ghost.
When suddenly said ghost appears. Quote, if you told me you were going out with your boyfriend, I wouldn't have busted my ass breaking through your juju walls to get here. End quote. Garland runs with her. He's apparently concerned for her safety and has the mystical ability to break through all spiritual defenses because he's just so masculine and strong.
Bartoli knows that she runs five miles every day because that's also for some reason in her background check.
It's very extensive.
I find that extremely creepy, but she doesn't. She's all like, wow, he's athletic and pretty muscular, but he's not as muscular as Garland, the serial killer ghost that I was just fucking. It was cosmically, sorry, it was impossible to explain how cosmically unfair it felt. That she had found this great guy as this, at the same time as she had been saddled with the ghost from hell. Who unfortunately seemed to possess the ability to invade her dreams and make her wild with lust.
They talk about the footage of the car that Haney had given them and how they weren't able to get any information from it. Charlie suddenly remembers that Holly was also in her dream last night and the dance connection. She tells Bartoli that she remembers Holly going to a dance before she died. But if that's how both Holly and Bailey were chosen, it suggests this is the original killer. Or, or that the copycat knows how the killer picked victims, but the dance thing isn't in any of the files. So how would the copycat know about that?
Charlie goes home and doesn't see Garland anywhere, so she vacuums up the salt in case he can't get back in. And she's mad at herself for being sad that he might have been whisked off to the great beyond. She whispers in the air, something along the lines of like, yo, fucker, you here? Let me know. But she doesn't get any response.
And then in chapter twenty-five, Kaminsky hears Charlie talking and asks if someone is with her. And Charlie says, quote, oh my God, are you still stuck on the idea that I've got some kind of naked sex god tucked away in here? If Charlie sounded a little annoyed, there was a good reason. The really annoying thing about it was the naked sex god in question had very annoyingly disappeared. I, I really, unquote, I really like that sentence.
Isn't it great?
That's a really funny sentence.
Yeah, I thought that was, oh my gosh. Yeah, I loved that. Charlie is jealous of Kaminsky's cute outfits and is thinking of buying some cuter ones herself. You know, so am I. Honestly, Kaminsky's like awesome look. I was like, damn, I should dress more femininely. Kaminsky's like, look, I seriously fucking saw someone. Charlie asks, quote, are you projecting your own obsession with sex onto me? Examine how you reacted to my inclusion in your group. You've been antagonistic with me from the beginning and it's quite possible that you're having a reaction because you view me, another female. As a rival for the two males on your team, more specifically as a rival for Agent Crane. Who seems to be your primary focus. You two bicker endlessly and that's a classic sign of attraction. It's understandable that you would resent another female who you fear might start to enroach on your territory. Thank you, R slash brain cells for this riveting analysis.
And Kaminsky is super pissed off because Bartoli is making her babysit Charlie as if that's as interesting as what the men get to do right now.
Yes, so that's why she's antagonistic.
Right. Which is fair. I would also be frustrated if I was being put on this task when.
Just because she's a woman.
And she's so qualified. Like she's such a like.
Bartoli is a sexist asshole. Like I'm just saying, like she, he might be like not as bad as a serial killer. But I would not date that guy.
Well, Charlie also asks why Crane asks, why Crane calls her lean cuisine? And it's apparently because Kaminsky gained a lot of weight in college and lost it by eating lean cuisine. So I also wouldn't want to date Crane.
Well, it's because her sister had started calling her lean cuisine instead of Lena.
True.
And so it's more like a, that seems more like, cause they have apparently known each other since middle school. He was engaged to her sister. Her sister was kind of lovingly jokingly calling her that. She calls him buzz cut.
That's fair. That's fair.
The heart to heart. It's interrupted by Crane who invites them to breakfast. Mystery Inc. Looks over the possible suspects. They're going over the footage from the dance the previous night and Kaminsky teases Charlie. Because of the earlier R slash brain cells ideas, noting that Charlie looks really into Bartoli and then all of a sudden looks pissed as fuck. And Charlie's like, lol, that's because there was a serial killer ghost trolling me. Uh, no, she doesn't tell them that.
Bartoli and Charlie head out to talk to Bailey Evans' four friends who were with her at the dance. One of them is her cousin Hannah Beckett. They're all freaking out. Hannah feels personally responsible because Bailey only came to visit because her parents got a divorce. Also, all of the moms are quote, country club chic.
Bartoli and Charlie don't learn much, but they assure the girls that they do think that Bailey Evans is still alive. When they step outside, however, they're swarmed by reporters. One of them asks about the identity of the body. What body?
In chapter six, we learned that the body.
Twenty-six.
Oh my God, what did I say?
Six.
Thank God.
Chapter twenty-six.
Sorry. A girl was found in the sand under the docks.
So I guess not thank God.
No, God didn't help here. Charlie is quote, determined to combat the physical symptoms of PTSD, post-traumatic murder.
Oh, PTSD. It autocorrected to the actual thing.
Well, Charlie is determined to combat the physical symptoms of PTSD, post-traumatic murder disorder. A too cute label for a potentially disabling way personal syndrome she had just identified in herself and named. It is only PTSD.
It's called PTSD.
It doesn't get renamed based on what type of trauma was in fact, was inflicted on you.
I mean, there's CP T S D, complex PTSD. It's like when you're in abusive situation over time. Or you know, a traumatic situation over.
Right, but there's not like PTCAD, post-traumatic car accident disorder.
No.
It's just PTSD cuz you, that you had a stress. Stress encompasses all of the things.
Yeah. So the dead girl is Bailey Evans. Uh, there's tons of people there and Mystery Inc. Is sure that the killer is there watching the cops exhume the body. Quote, it's possible for some reason, the killer can't be here. But if there's any way he can, he's here at the scene. This type of killer is compulsive in that way. Thanks, Dr. Freud.
Mr. Inc. Concludes that the serial killer is clearly escalating as he only had Bailey for four days before he killed her. And usually he keeps girls for ten. It's usually three weeks after that before he kidnaps another girl, but because he only kept Bailey for four days, they aren't sure what he's going to do next. Maybe something happened that made him kill the girl before he was ready. Charlie gets a head rush and sits down on a cooler. And then suddenly she hears Garland's familiar voice. And he tells her that she should try not to faint because he can't catch her if she does. Too cute.
Chapter twenty-seven. Charlie is at first comforted by Garland's appearance, but then she remembers, oh yeah, he's a serial killer. Like the motherfucker who did this to Bailey Evans. He thinks however, that she's mad at him because of what happened last night. And she really realizes, holy shit, that three chapter long dream fuck was real.
Tony tries to comfort Charlie and she quote, focused on the real life good guy with long-term potential. Versus the ghost of the murderous psychopath who just happened through some strange cosmic alchemy that she was never going to understand. To turn her on to her back teeth. Which is another phrase I haven't heard, but I like, it's really, it's a funny choice of words.
I know it's right when my wisdom teeth start vibrating. Yeah. Garland suggests that the killer is probably listening to a police radio scanner. And when Charlie suggests this, uh, the feds are like, wait, so do you think it's a cop? Cause they've never seen any episodes of any crime shows ever, nor are feds. Everyone has a police scanner. Everyone's listening on the police scanner.
I'm like, pretty sure there's an app you can get.
Batman has a police scanner.
On the App Store.
There's an app for that.
Uh, Batman definitely does, but that's because that's Batman. Um, Charlie is still obsessed with Garland. Quote, why do I care what he thinks anyway? Answer, I don't. This is not a relationship and he is not a man. And even if he were a man, this would not be a relationship. Quote, classic things you say when you don't care. As they're leaving to see Bailey Evans' body, Garland looks and is horrified. Quote, you really think I would need to do something like that to a woman? End quote. We don't have any reason to think you didn't. Like as far as we know, the evidence that you slashed seven women is like super compelling. And you were imprisoned for it, so.
Oh yeah. And sentenced to death for it.
Yeah. And we've never heard there were any irregularities with the evidence or anything.
No, no. Uh, they go back to the crime scene. Bartoli goes upstairs with Charlie and asks when she was planning on telling him that she's psychic. She's like, what the fuck? Oh, wait, you know how many miles I run in a day. Of course, you know that I ha- I like told people I saw ghosts fifteen years ago. Um, she asks why he didn't ask her about it before and he's like, oh, I was waiting for you to tell me. Quote, what? Did I see dead people? Angry, she resumed walking towards the house. He fell in besides her. Do you? Yes, sometimes. Not that it does, ever does anyone any good. Ball, sad Charlie.
She's not gonna be sad for very long because Bartoli kisses her.
You mean that sexist asshole kissed her? Wow. She should feel like so happy about that. Especially how she gets to choose between him and a serial killer ghost.
But it was a hard kiss, thorough with plenty of tongue. She's kind of turned on, but quote, what her body didn't do was melt or burn. No fireworks went off against her closed lids. Her world did not rock. All her preconceptions about herself and men did not shatter Bartoli.
He kissed her to get it out of the way, uh, because he wants to offer her a job on his team. But he doesn't date people who are on his team. So she, he kissed her. Sure. Thanks for that logic Bartoli. Uh, as they approach the house, Kaminsky is grabbing pizza from a pizza delivery guy. And they hear, this is, okay, so this is the, the second quote that I want to do an entire. Like this podcast is already way too long, but I want a longer one. Seriously, only about these things. Kaminsky, when a person dies, it's like they just drop out of their bodies. Then they step into a new one. When a person dies, Crane replied, sounding like he was talking through his teeth. They enter into eternal rest until judgment day. You are so, Kaminsky began angrily, only to break off when she spotted Charlie and Tony. Is this a Scientology thing?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. I'm not, I don't, I don't know about.
We'll have to, we'll have to talk about that in our, in our follow-up podcast. Those two quotes were Kaminsky talks about how she's a Scientologist in this book.
And then Charlie goes upstairs, which I think is a fair response to hearing all of that. And when she enters her apartment, the TV is on even though she was sure she left it off. Garland is waiting for her and Charlie quote, realized that she was looking at one pissy ghost.
Chapter twenty-eight. Charlie assumes that Garland is pissed off because he saw Bartoli kiss her. But he's just like, no, I just want you to do like the juju that you promised me to keep me in the mortal realm. You owe me. He smiled. It wasn't a nice smile. In fact, there was a time when she would have said it was downright dangerous. Now it just made her mad.
Charlie goes to bed and her dreams are just a jumble of terrifying images. She sees Bailey Evans' body again, only this time her eyes pop open and she starts to scream soundlessly because her vocal cords have been caught, cut. Along with her throat.
Spooky.
Charlie opens her eyes and Garland is there telling her that, hey, you're safe and I'm here, the serial killer.
I'm here. She asks why he's in her bedroom when she told him not to go into there. Uh, and she asked him to explain last night. Quote, short answer is comma, it looks like I'm your dream man, doc.
He then forces her to call him Michael and say, please, in order for him to get him to explain what happened last night. Because that's not creepy at all.
Quote, like I said, you had a nightmare last night. I got through your salt barrier, went right through the ceiling and came in to see what was up. There was a girl in your room, a dead girl. I recognized that type right off now. You were asleep, but you seemed real agitated, tossing and turning and moaning. I was just coming around to see the corner of the bed, trying to get between you and the girl in case she had bad intentions or something. And then she saw me and started to turn away. Then, here's the good part, doc. You rose right up and tried to go after her. Not your body, it stayed where it was, but your spirit, I guess that's what you wanna call it, went flying after that girl who vanished right out of the wall. If I hadn't caught you around the waist and hung on, you would have gone right after her. And apparently, uh, they were able to touch each other in that form and somehow because they were touching, when they went back into her dream. Uh, he went with her.
So your soul and my soul met in the sky. End quote. And then he breaks out some Shakespeare, which really impresses thirsty Charlie. Um, Garland describes the girl and Charlie realizes it was Holly. Apparently she said something like, quote, I didn't quite catch it all, but something about a bag. It's in the bag. Or maybe where is my bag or something like that? And then Holly saw me and then left.
Charlie tells Garland about the night Holly was kidnapped and her whole traumatic backstory. Garland tells her she should feel proud of herself because she's done shit with her life. She feels good and notices that he feels protective of her. He's all, if I were here, I would fuck the bad memories right out of you. And that makes her really horny. And that's one approach to treating, uh, PTSD.
Charlie tries a new form of quote voodoo stuff to try to keep him on the mortal plane. She sprays a bunch of honey and oil on him. Apparently it's a Middle Eastern trick that might work. And she falls asleep and didn't remember her dreams, but when she wakes up, she realizes what Holly meant about the bag.
Chapter twenty-nine, we're back at Charlie's beautiful house in Big Stone Gap. She's looking through all the shit she kept from the night of Holly's kidnapping, which she hasn't opened since the hospital gave it back to her. She couldn't figure out what specifically Holly meant about her bag. Um, so she and Kaminsky decide to bring it all back to the mystery machine for extra inspection. As Charlie washes her hand, Garland appears.
And apparently he does this because whenever running water is near Charlie, he appears. Otherwise he can float about and do whatever he wants. As Kaminsky and Charlie leave, Kaminsky breaks a heel on Charlie's steps. She really just like complains about it. There's a hole. She blames Charlie for it. And Charlie responds by complaining about Kaminsky's stripper heels.
Time for girl talk. It's time for girl talk. Kaminsky reveals that she wears high heels because she's hella short and men in her field don't take her seriously. Uh, so Charlie bonds with her over the fact that she wears slacks and flats for the same reason. Um, geopolitical twinsees.
Kaminsky also reveals that she knows all about Bartoli's offer to Charlie. She was against Charlie joining because she and Bartoli definitely have the hots for each other. Charlie is super offended because Crane and Kaminsky also have the same thing going on. As they pass, as they drive, they pass a graveyard. Charlie makes Kaminsky stop the car and she dashes out to find Garland's grave.
Chapter thirty, Charlie balls over Garland's grave. Garland is very nice to her. Deaf marriage material. They return to the mystery machine. They've reduced the suspects to seventeen men who were at all three dances the victims were at. Two are band members, eight are security, three are audience, a lighting guy, a sound guy, a waiter and a bartender. But they're pretty sure it's a security guy because the company logo is an eagle, just like the hat that the dead kid described to Garland.
After a super late night, they all return to the rented house and Charlie finally decides to psychoanalyze herself. It's like a pop psych dream.
Quote, because she had daddy issues as a result of having the opposite gender parent absent for almost her entire life. And because she had trust issues as a result of having an alcoholic and totally unreliable primary parental figure. She somewhere deep inside herself believed herself unworthy of being loved. Therefore she chose to enter into relationships that were programmed from their outset to fail. She sabotaged them herself subconsciously, but consistently by choosing a male partner who for some reason or another was incapable of forming a stable and lasting partnership bond. So why Garland? Because he was the ultimate unavailable male. Diagnosis, you are one screwed up chick. Diagnosis of the diagnosis, very professional. End quote.
She still can't find Garland, so she starts looking at his file again. He was a marine. He got an honorable discharge. He was a mechanic. He has a public intoxication charge, an assault and battery from a bar brawl, and then the seven hideous murders of young women. And we spend a few paragraphs wondering if Garland really killed them. And then Charlie falls asleep and finds herself in the perpy purple, perpy spooky purple twilight hunted by spooky shit.
Chapter thirty-one, Garland catches Charlie because of course he does. They use dream logic to spirit themselves out of there and into Charlie's house. Charlie asks Garland where he was and it turns out he was checking up on his murderer in the prison. He was so pissed off that apparently he was solid for a second and the guards saw him. As soon as he realized it, he quote, got hit with what felt like an atomic blast that kicked him straight into spookville. And he couldn't find his way out until Charlie found herself there.
Garland accuses Charlie of caring about him. Garland accuses Charlie of caring about him. And Charlie says, quote, I hate to burst your bubble, but it's more like I feel responsible for you.
He responds, you've got a whole save a life and you're responsible for it for everything going on?
And then Charlie says, I didn't save your life.
Garland responds, no, you didn't. What you did was you saved my soul.
Mic drop. Boom. What now, Charlie?
Uh, fucking, that's what now.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
That's fucking deciding that it's their last night together. Uh, they have epic ghost sex. His mouth was hard and hungry, possessive, demanding.
And in chapter thirty-two, it keeps on going.
Yep, still fucking. He felt huge, long and thick and hard, all velvet over scalding steel. They finish, uh, and they're like looking at each other and suddenly she's woken up.
It's four twenty AM, nice. But apparently there's been another victim and it's Hannah Beckett. It's Hannah Beckett, Bailey Evans' cousin. When they show up to the crime scene, Officer Haney lets them inside. Hannah's dead father appears to Charlie and tells her that he definitely broke the killer's tooth. She walks outside where Bartoli catches her, then quote, she felt something. Call it a disturbance in the force. End quote. It's Garland and he's pissed.
Chapter thirty-three. After Charlie shares the broken tooth info with Bartoli, she and Garland have a heart to heart. She accuses him of being jealous of Bartoli, to which he responds, except for being dead. I'm a pretty normal guy and I just fucked you to Sunday and back, so yeah. He was right besides her, gorgeous as always, but unbelievably achingly dear now too. And that's what was twisting her heart. He is Bambi.
Charlie tells Garland that he is in fact out of the pitcher picture, given that he's dead. Kaminsky runs out to grab Charlie. They're on the move to grab potential suspects. Back in the mystery machine, we establish that the killer is not only escalating, but he's pissed off too. Hannah Beckett's dad was also slashed to pieces and the murder of the family was way, way more brutal this time.
Armed with a list of potential suspects, Charlie Tonley, Kaminsky and Crane, in a pretty hitty tie. Decide to scope out, uh, all of these people and see if any have a broken tooth. They're also able to eliminate folks with pets, according to Dr. Freud.
The first they go to check out is Hampton Moore, a coffee shop employee. Next might be Eric Duncan, a bartender. Slight hiccup though. Eric is the cousin of the police officer named John Price, who's Haney's partner. Could there be an info leak? Crane checks Hampton out for a broken tooth and comes back with donuts. Rad. It's not Hampton though. Next is Terry Kingston, a used car salesman and pizza delivery guy by night. They're going to ask him about a motorcycle he's selling as a front when they realize something is on fire.
It's Terry Kingston's house. Is kidnapping victim Hannah Beckett inside? Charlie fears she might be. When the Fed Four rush out amid all the fire trucks and other chaos. Charlie thinks that she sees Hannah off by an SUV. She catches up to the girl, just as she gets in the SUV and Charlie realizes it's not Hannah. It's Bailey Evans, the dead girl. After making eye contact with Bailey, Charlie is knocked out with quote, something that felt like a mule's kick in the side.
In chapter thirty-four, Garland's honey dipped voice wakes Charlie up. She's handcuffed to a narrow twin bed inside of an RV and it's definitely not the mystery machine. The FBI has no idea where she is, but next to her is Hannah Beckett, alive but unconscious, also handcuffed to a bed. Hannah is in a stunning green, neon green sequined number. Kneeling by her bed, however, is the ghostly Bailey Evans, who is dead.
Yeah, she's a ghost.
Yeah.
Garland looks fucking terrified, so Charlie knows it's a serious situation. She realizes that Garland was right about the killer having a police scanner, uh, but based off the age of the driver, he can't be the original Boardwalk killer. Garland pledges that he won't let anyone get hurt, but can't do shit cuz he's dead. He goes to try and get Tony's attention.
Charlie is pretty sure she's gonna get murdered real quick because she's an obstacle to the killer and not part of his whole fantasy, so she tries to stay quiet. Bailey Evans' ghost is trying to do her best to be helpful, she says, hey, the killer made me call him Terry Bear. It can only be Terry Kingston. Bailey recounts her death while sobbing, which fair. The killer had said he'd let her go, made her say she loved him, et cetera, but then just killed her anyway, because you know what? I think the serial killer is a bad dude.
After parking, Terry Bear walks to the foot of Charlie's bed wielding a big ass hunting knife. You should have stayed away from my van. Charlie sees the broken tooth. Charlie thinks quick. Stop, Terry Bear. We need to talk about why you didn't keep your promise to Bailey. Thirsty Charlie notes that the killer is moderately good-looking and realizes the killer delivered pizza to their safe house the previous night. Because of course, Terry Bear is appropriately freaked out that this chick seems to know his secrets.
Quote, she lied to me. The left corner of Terry Kingston's mouth started to twitch. She said she loved me, but, but she didn't. End quote. Gee, thanks, incel. That's totally reason to kill someone. Totally reason you are the real victim of this story.
Oh, yeah.
Quote, I didn't wanna kill her. I gave her a chance. I was good to her, got her pretty things, made sure she had what she needed, except autonomy. She kept saying she loved me and for a little while I was stupid and believed her. Then I asked her if she wanted to go home and she said she did. After all I'd done for her, she wanted to leave me and go home. I knew then that she'd been lying and I knew that she was just like the others, that she didn't love me, so I killed her. End quote, because of course they wouldn't love you, you're a serial killer kidnapper.
Look, they lied to him. Forrest, they lied to Terry Bear. They told him that they loved him. But they wanted, he got them pretty things.
I mean, you know, Terry Bear.
Pretty things. Okay. Garland returns and cheers on Charlie's play for time. Charlie relays that Bailey is upset that Terry killed her and uses the knowledge of how he killed her to wig him the fuck out. Garland even passes on knowledge from earlier victims, Caroline and Danielle. Bailey even reveals that not only did Terry steal her little brother's video game, cold. But that he had an argument with someone right before she was killed.
And then suddenly a wild Holly appears. And she tells Garland to tell Charlie that this kid watched her get murdered. It turns out Terry is the son of the original Boardwalk killer who killed Holly. Terry Bear loses it. He moves in for the kill and then his head explodes because he got shot.
Blood and brain all over the fucking place.
It is very graphically described.
Blood and brain all over Charlie and Hannah.
Yeah.
It's Haney. Haney saved the day.
Good job, local, local cop.
Yeah. Bailey disappears after her killer dies and Charlie breathes a sigh about how it's all over. Then Haney starts, starts saying some weird shit. Quote, I should have killed that little piss ant long ago, just like I should have come after you fifteen years ago. When I found out you were in the Palmer's house that night.
What?
And he picks up the knife and he attacks Charlie.
In chapter thirty-five, Garland throws himself between Haney and Charlie and through the power of love, he materializes. He rips the chain out of the wall and Haney is shocked that this hot ass fucker just appeared out of nowhere. And Garland takes advantage of his sexy shock to throw Haney down and tell Charlie to run. Charlie does, and she finds herself in the woods and realizes Garland took the killing blow that was meant for her. Because the knife was sticking out of his wide, strong back.
She sees Haney leave the RV with his gun. She stays silent and dead sprints towards the road. Haney is the original killer. Her worst nightmare has come true. The killer returned and she didn't recognize him. She interacted with him multiple times. She keeps running and is barely missed by a gunshot. The chase continues.
She sees the FBI's SUV and they see her. Tony, Crane and Kaminsky hop out with their guns drawn. Tony to the rescue. Tony tells Haney to freeze and drop his weapon. Haney freezes and drops his weapon and puts his hands in the air. And Tony reassures Charlie that she's safe. And then Charlie tells him where Hannah is being held.
A while later, after Hannah is freed and Haney has been arrested, Charlie sits on a log. The cops, FBI and media have come. The Meeds ghosts have also come and welcomed Bailey into the hereafter, after they do the group hug thing.
Charlie asks, how did you find me? And Tony says that Haney's DNA was on a chapstick Charlie had from the night the Palmers were murdered. The FBI traced his cell phone, so Garland didn't help. And then Charlie remains super indecisive about whether she should be in a relationship with a good guy who loves her.
Good guy.
Or, or the dead guy who may have murdered a bunch of women. I mean, he's.
She can't find anyone else in the world, but like this kinda sexist guy and a serial killer ghost.
So it makes sense to me that she couldn't find anyone else mid-investigation? But now, there's lots of eligible love interests to compete with.
Chapter thirty-six, the final chapter. Four days later, Tony is taking Charlie back to her home, presumably via country roads. They're driving in a blue Lincoln sedan. Product placement is key all the way to the end. Tony takes Charlie to the dinner that he owes her, uh, before he returns to FBI headquarters to meet with Crane and Kaminsky. They'll be back, back in Quantico until another serial killer is on their radar sequel.
It turns out Terry Kingston is Haney's son, but was taken by his mother after she and Haney divorced. The divorce was the reason the original Boardwalk killings began. Hanley, Haney only discovered that his son was the killer after reviewing surveillance footage. He then spoofed the footage to cover for his son. And then Tony lets us know that. Faking surveillance footage to cover for a serial killer is very damning evidence. And Haney only stopped killing because he'd been in a car accident, which is why he had a cane and he had extensive plastic sur- or limp. And he had extensive plastic surgery, which is why Charlie doesn't recognize him anymore.
Turns out, Haney went to, went to his son's house and, uh, found Bailey Evans. His son admitted that he knew dear old dad, uh, was the Boardwalk killer. Whenever Haney was holding women, baby Kingston would hide in a closet and watch him torture and murder them. Kingston had a webcam recording the girls he kidnapped at his house, uh, and so his fight with his dad was recorded. And the one pointed on Bailey Evans, once again, a villain is brought down by their hubris. The webcam also caught Bailey's murder, uh, which Kingston did on Haney's order. Which is why she was killed ahead of schedule and why he was so pissed for the next killing. Serial killers can't stop, won't stop.
Haney burned down Kingston's house once Hannah was kidnapped to dispose of evidence and make sure Kingston couldn't take Hannah there. And he's, he's claiming complete innocence. He's saying, I didn't do it. And then that leads. Seasoned serial killer expert, Dr. Charlie Stone to say, quote, so Haney's claiming total innocence? How can he do that? To begin with, he tried to kill me. End quote.
Charlie, I've always wondered about the nature versus nurture element in the evolution of a serial killer. Did Terry, Terry Kingston inherit, uh, yet to be unidentified serial killer gene from his father? Or was his urge to kill sparked by watching his father murder those poor girls? Bartoli, good question. I'm sure you'll ponder it endlessly. Charlie, I will, because I'm a researcher and that's what researchers do. I thought they did research, but that's okay. Pondering is part of it.
Charlie turns down Tony's offer to join his squad. Her job, home and Garland's grave are all in Big Stone Gap, so that's where she's gonna stay. She hasn't seen Garland since he saved her life. Bartoli asks Charlie if she's ready to tell him about, quote, the blonde mystery guy. But she's not, it's a icy dead people thing. She says, quote, sometimes spirits flash in and out, end quote. And. You know Garland certainly flashed in and out during that sexy sexy three chapter dream. Tony repeats the offer to join his team. She says no again, and then, quote. At least there's an upside to it, he said philosophically, unquote, and he kisses her and it's a kiss with possibilities.
Ooh. She doesn't invite him in. Suddenly, she's, here's ESPN blaring on her TV. Quote, just like it might be if, for example, a pissy ghost who had learned to work the remote. Had just watched her kiss another man.
And that's like the last line in the book. Yeah, that's it. The book never confirms for sure if it's Garland or not.
Or if he killed people.
Right. Like it's definitely Garland, but the book plays it real close to its firm, strong, unmistakably masculine chest.
Yeah, he's unmistakably masculine. That was the biggest, uh, descriptor of Garland. Uh, was masculine, male. Gorgeous is too feminine of a word, remember? Men and women are different.
Very different.
Very different.
Very different.
Wanna know what happens next to Dr. Charlotte Stone and the infuriatingly seductive ghost, Michael Garland? Look for the next book in the series, coming soon wherever books are sold. Yeah. Do you wanna tell the spoiler you looked up? There's four books in this series. There are four books of ghost sex in this series. Tell us the spoiler cuz I was honestly like gonna look up Cliff Notes cuz I want to know what happened.
So I looked up the last book, which is called The Last Time I Saw Her and came out in twenty fifteen. And it's one last chance, she has one last chance to prove that Michael Garland is innocent.
Why does she need to prove that he's innocent to catch the person who did it?
I don't know. I mean, probably because then she'll be able to feel good about.
Well, also so that the girls who are getting, like the person responsible for killing the girls, like that evidence should. Count towards that person being put away.
Yeah, and in this book, she's, he's facing death again in the other, in the underworld, so I wouldn't be surprised.
What?
I think it's like.
Whoa, whoa.
Yeah, no, no, no. Because she's trying to save him from being completely obliterated, but like.
There is more that has to do with like the spirit realm. Like there's a whole mythology. Okay, I kinda need to like read these.
The description says, in the next world, Charlotte's ghostly lover, convicted killer, Michael Garland, is facing death yet again. It seems the only way Charlie can snatch Michael from the jaws of oblivion is by proving his innocence. And this dead man's dead ringer may just be the key. Because a mysterious stranger is in Big Stone Gap and it could be Michael's identical twin.
An evil twin and a mythology of the underworld, fuck.
And then like, and then there's a prison break, so a bunch of psychopaths get loose and she has to like arrest them all before the end of the book while trying to prove Michael innocent.
So this is Arkham Asylum.
I mean, yeah, I guess, when you think, actually, when you point it out, yeah, it really is Arkham Asylum.
Dr. Charlotte Batman.
Dr. Charlie Batman.
Dr. Charlie Batman. Yeah, so that's the book. This is our infuriatingly long podcast about it. I suppose that makes sense. I was being like very. Uh, optimistic when I was like a minute a chapter.
Yeah, that would have been none of us sort of talking about what we think about it or making jokes or anything like that.
I think it's more that, yeah, reading speed, cuz I, I did add, I wanted, I wanted to communicate like a flavor. Of the book, not just what happened, like a flavor of like Karen's writing, because. That's what's so great about this book. Like I'm sure that that's why like Leah Bonnema picked this book.
Oh, yeah, no, the Karen, Karen Robards' writing style is very fun.
It's so fun. It's so fun. It's an easy read. I'm not a romance book writer. I'm also not a mystery book reader.
Me neither.
I'm not a, like, not in the sci-fi section or fantasy section reader.
Yeah.
Typically, typically. But like, that's just me. This does kinda constitute fantasy, though.
Yeah, more than I expected it to. Like I knew there would be a ghost, but I didn't think there would be like.
A mythology.
Misty souls and the mythology and everything.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, I mean, despite not being generally a fa- like a person who's drawn to either of the genres that make up this book. The writing was so fun that you're just like, what's gonna happen next? Like the way it's written is just so fun and so ingrained. It's so fast, it's so light.
Yeah.
It's a really fun book.
Yeah.
And I totally see why it can be this first CGP book club selection.
Yeah, super excited. Definitely want her to come back so we can do the rest of this fucking series.
Oh, that'd be great. That'd be great.
That would be so fun. Okay, friends, we hope that this was helpful to you. We hope that you are not. Super tired of our voices by now, um.
We hope we have helped you catch some in-jokes on the episode of CGP based on the book. Cuz that's sort of why we wanted to do it is so that if you don't have a chance to read it, you can still get the references and get.
And feel empowered to call in and feel empowered to comment in the Discord.
Yeah.
And, and all of that, um, because it's gonna be super frickin' fun.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and yeah, the, there is an audio version in the library, at least in San Francisco. Um, I read it at two times speed. I slowed down for, for some of the sex chapters, to be real. I didn't wanna like miss any of the like hilarious details. Yeah.
Definitely, definitely read it. Check it out.
Check, check, ch- check it out. Um, yeah, so get excited. Leah Bonnema, August twenty-first, twenty nineteen. We're also gonna do a pod about her on Monday.
Yes, this is, this will be a.
Per usual.
Big week for us trash people.
Oh, we have so much trashy shit to go through. But we love you. We love all of you. Jump on the Discord if you. Don't know about it, but for some reason have.
You might be watching it on YouTube.
Us?
If you're watching CGP on YouTube, you might not know about it.
That's true. Yeah.
Go to ChrisGett.com/live to check out the Discord.
Yeah. Yeah. Awesome. Well, uh, we love you all. Just like Charlie Stone loves a serial killer ghost. We can all make mistakes and come back by being like absurdly great lovers, can't we, Forrest?
Yeah. I mean, that's what lets us lose well, you know?
Yep. Yep.